On the work session for the Perry City Council for June the sixth, two thousand twenty-two order, we have a four. Item three are citizens with input. Are there any citizens here that would like to address Mayor and Council that are not going to the end of this evening? Thank you. Item four are items for review and discussion. Item four A is the F five two thousand twenty-three budget hearing. So we have continuation of the areas that we've been having over the last couple of meetings. Item four eight one is the Perry Houston County Airport authority. I think Mr. Paul is going to reduce some information. Mr. Paul, do come up with a podium and please give us your name and address. We look forward to hearing what you have to say about that beautiful airport. I understand we got five thousand feet out there now. Operator, turn that. We'll have to turn that out. Are we good?
Yeah.
Okay. Operation manager of Perry Houston County Airport.
Good.
What have you, you have a, you're supposed to have a slideshow here? Here. Okay. There's a switch on the side. Okay. It'll be a very short presentation. Okay. But we have an, you know, the generals, of course, the chairman, Daniel Wilson, our chair, and we have Ned Sanders will be retiring over this year. And we have a long, you know, cycle, right? Okay. Let me get, figure out what you, there we go. Raise historical reminder, I've only got three, three points on the table tonight. Raise historical reminder, operating budget, and we make an impact in that we have at Perry. The history, again, established nineteen forty-two, uh, in rural field, transferred to City Perry in nineteen forty-seven, operated as Perry Port Valley Airport, to nineteen ninety-four, Port Valley moved on. And the state legislature moved to an authority, Houston County and City Perry since nineteen ninety-four. Now, the board of directors, operating budget. Annual income twenty-one, twenty-two, six, six thirty-three, expected in twenty-two and twenty-three of nine, almost nine hundred and two thousand dollars. The cost to good soul in twenty twenty-two was fifty-two, in twenty-two and twenty-three, about four hundred and fifty-eight, which mostly even, I don't know if I would, when you buy gas, only another, gross income in twenty-one, twenty-two, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, and the gross income in twenty-two, twenty-three is expected to be four hundred and ninety thousand. Quite a big chunk. Then again, annual expenses are also a pretty good big chunk. Three hundred and fifty-eight thousand in twenty-one, twenty-two, and four seventy-five in twenty-two, twenty-three. Now, even with the jump in income and expenses, our debt income is starting to go down because of operating costs and the expansion that we had, had this year. Obviously, most of you who have the terminal, we are in the terminal boundary, resurfacing of the runway is completed, lighting is completed, so we're completely operational in the morning. Why such an increase in expenses? Insurance on the new terminal, a new hangar, and other ascendery, jumped twenty, jumped twenty-two thousand dollars this year alone, jumped, not, not cost, jumped twenty-two thousand dollars. We have two new rental properties that Houston County graciously acquired for us. Utility's increased by eighteen thousand dollars. Our debt service, which I told, addressed on the next slide, thirty thousand, and the interest income on home and debt service, twenty-five thousand. Reason for the debt and service increase, we have several strategic opportunities that it would be visibly irresponsible to pass them up. The corporate taxiway design, and let's, let me mention the corporate taxiway will give us additional space for four new corporate hangers. One, have one corporate hangar spot that we took up in the terminal, will build into running taxiway, allow further access way to allow others to get in the, now, push one button, sorry, there we go. The corporate taxiway design, when I'm talking about, is sixty-five thousand dollars that has to pay you this year. That is reversible with the construction. The construction of that taxiway, four hundred thousand, with a seventy-five, twenty-nine match, we will have to run up to a hundred thousand. Those are two figures that we need to come up immediately. We've got sixty-five back, but, you know, we haven't had it begin with. We have a construction of fourteen T-hangers in place, of fourteen, one million, four hundred thousand dollars. We have a grant of one billion dollars for those. So the cost of the fourteen hangers will be four hundred thousand for us alone. Taxiway, including that extra hangar, so we put on it for people can deal with it, or necessarily have to go themselves, will generate over six thousand dollars annually. Additional, additional fuel sales, T-hangers, fourteen T-hangers that we have made a million dollar grant for, will generate thirty-nine thousand annually. Again, additional fuel sales, have additional taxes that that airport is there for, they have to handle, pay Houston County and Perry. Uh, F A impact, a hundred plus aircraft, they have two tiers, under a hundred and over a hundred. When you're under a hundred, you have a certain, uh, maybe this is a, not, I mean, over, over a hundred aircraft, you're in a different tier, and you can run them with more, more grants, but our opportunities with the N B A, they don't have any. Economic impact of Perry Houston County Airport, this was in two thousand twenty. As you mostly know, it, they have an economic impact in five years. This is in two thousand twenties, which impacted the community with a total of ninety-eight dollars, three million, they go seven million, seven million, all of our output, and a total economic output, ten million. In twenty fifteen, the total economic output was five million, eight hundred thousand. So in five years, we've almost doubled the economic impact of Perry Houston County Airport. So, draw your own conclusion of what the next five years might do if we can continue our expansion there. Sanford, Jack Link's, which, Jack Link's has two jets and a helicopter, both of which have visited us occasionally. And I know there's a lot of impact of Houston County and the city of Perry, the reason they came, but I kind of feel like we were part of that, because we have visited us several times. Basically, I'm just saying, with your continued support, our impact in the next five years sometime will be substantial, and we do appreciate and ask for your support. Okay? My question is, um, four headed mayor request of forty-four thousand, six hundred, then the recommended amount for the budget is forty-four thousand, six hundred.
Yes.
We look forward to continuing working with you, Dr. Paul. Like I said, you're well good. Do you think it one end and do you think it the other end, we get five thousand?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, what is this? Any, do we need to do something to observe the area? Item four A two is the Perry Area Division of Visitors Bureau. I think Ms. Wilson is going to do the reservation for us here. What have you, what's?
Yes, sir. Thank you, um, thank you, Mayor, Council, for allowing us these nights. Um, so this is our budget that our director, Allison, and we worked on along with a number of directors. They approved this budget, our authority did at their meeting twenty-sixth meeting, and public notices been placed in the Home Journal, and our public hearing will take place on June twenty-third, and at that time, the authority will pass the resolution to adopt the budget at our July twenty-eighth meeting. I wanted to thank you for the support that you've given us this past year. We were able to start the Sippin's Row program, which actually won an international design award, and we were able to create the website for the Perry's normal tours, along with the Historical Society, and we were able to add a churches tour to that website. We are attending a travel media meetup, um, later this month, I'll be meeting with some travel writers and pitching stories about Perry, promoting for writers, and, um, we have set up welcome tents at most of the larger events out of Perry County. We've been there all day today with the Brad event, which is a bicycle ride across Georgia. So they sent about seven hundred bicycle riders here, and we've been out there giving them pizzas and peanuts and telling them all about our restaurants in town, and sending them on buses into town where Miss Hartley with the mainstream program has set up a concert for them, a lot of work in this. But next year, there will be big changes at the C D meeting, and we plan to take advantage of this. It's, um, new changes can be tough, but they are related to new ways of doing things, and that is new ideas and more creativity, so we really plan to take advantage of this. But I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about our budgets.
Captain, any questions to the C D meeting? Understanding is that the recommended amount is three hundred and four, I mean, three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, and that's what you share with your budget slot. Any questions?
I have just one question about the biking event today. Was that, um, did they come here as a result of the efforts of the C D meeting?
They, honestly, I don't think directly, no. They, they picked their route, and then they contacted the communities along that route and kind of set it up that way. The riding event does that themselves, and they contact some of the cities along the way and decide where they're going to do it. So when they contact those, I think that they, Allison has something to do, I know she's the one that set up the riding events, and she met with them many times and did a ride around with them, so she couldn't possibly get the, the, the package that got her to come through, but.
I just wondered if that was something, would might have occurred? You all might have heard that to say that.
Any other person? Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Looking forward to the changes, and looking forward to all the work we come together.
Well, thank you for your support of us.
Item four A three is the Perry Area Historical Society, and I think on our, um, recap, they have requested sixteen six, and sixteen six is what's going to be placed in the budget. Uh, there's no one here that have a meeting this evening, this or the fact of office. Kelly's some liberal appreciation, uh, to the citizens of the nation. Item four A four is Twenty-First Century Partnership, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, Council, good evening. So first off, I want to thank you very much for the support that you provided, the Twenty-First Century Partnership over the years. It's amazing, uh, the amount of economic impact of Air Force Base has, right at five twenty-five, building into our economic impact across the region. Um, the things that we do at the partnership, but to help make sure that we can keep that effort going. Um, there has been a slight increase, you'll see in our letter request from, from last year, it is up now to fourteen, two seventy-one, seventy-one, uh, and that's just a slight increase due to the population shift and where, uh, where we now focus in the region. Others, uh, in the, in the, across the region are also solid that we increase, which is good news, because that means that we have more population coming to the region than our military and military affiliate, uh, so certainly, uh, so usually, uh, when I come up, trying to give a little bit of update right now, it's a much end season of the airport, so I thought I would, uh, tell you a little bit about that, and we'll get to it in depth in a few days, because Congress is in the middle of reviewing things right now, but, uh, Air Force asked for about a twenty million dollar increase to the budget, they're up one hundred and four now, uh, is what they've requested. Uh, what are the impacts that I saw to robust Air Force Base? Well, it's fairly controlled. Um, Air Force is, is focusing on accelerating change or losing, so they want to ensure that we have the new weapons systems in place to be able to, uh, to fight our, your, your , of course, that struggle, and make sure that we are working to impact what's going on in Russia. So that's what the weapons systems they were focused on, backed to U S, the Secretary of Defense, we're on building stuff, uh, that's areas that had got in China, then we'll build in the long term. Okay, that's fair enough. Um, some of the dangers that we saw, of course, we knew that this was coming, we're starting to see the, uh, the increase in the, um, the J Star's aircraft, those are starting to come off the ramp and, you know, they're shifting over to the new weapons systems. Uh, but, and I don't know if you saw in the Houston local government, this is last, uh, week, but they quit, they, they made a announcement, uh, for the, 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 the , the, 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 the,[1136.12]
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being with us this evening.
Thank you very much.
I mean, Nancy is over in, somewhere in Scotland or somewhere like that.
Sure.
I have four eighty-six as a budget recap by Mr. Gilmore. And Mr. Gilmore, next to this. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the new board had recommendations or adjustments from the administration based on your last budget hearing. For the parrot police department recommending to adjust their budgets for the taser upgrade over five year period of twenty-four thousand. Not recommending the pole camera, recommending the license plate reader for twenty-two thousand, recommending the body camera replaced under fifty-one thousand. Not recommending the part-time logistics technician, or full-time logistics technician, and not recommending the flop cameras. Originally, we had the flop cameras in, but council members may be aware that the county is in the process of putting together a overall plan for the security cameras. So we thought it'd be more appropriate to wait until that determination is debated, and then our department can decide which way to base to go on that. So that would be an additional ninety-seven thousand for the police department. For the fire and emergency services department, not recommending the additional fire inspector. Are recommending the herd rescue tools for thirty-six thousand, recommending the all-terrain vehicle for twenty-seven thousand. The other items listed there, we are not recommending, at least at this time. That may be something on some of them we go back and take a look at later in fiscal year. For the park and leisure services, we are recommending that the department proceed with the middle school age program. But we're recommending that they would proceed as fee-based programs, like we do with our other type of programs, and see what success the department has with that. The adult athletic programs are also fee-based programs. And then the shifting for the, we are recommending funding for the youth program subsidies, ten thousand. And then the request to shift the leisure camp monies is denied. The reason for that is, is that those monies in the leisure services are fees in the budget, or fees exist maybe generated by the camp. So if there is no camp, there are no fees to provide. You may remember with the department community development, they did not request anything additional other than to advise council, but when they thought some of their upcoming needs are going to be. Do you have to answer any questions again?
Credit to council members.
Who's funding the meals for children in mid-thirty?
Sorry?
I got my answer from Ms. George. She said the school system is supplying that money for, for kids at mid-thirty while school's out.
Yes, that's correct. That's all handled by the Board of Education.
Okay.
USDA program, the big one.
Correct. Thank you.
Other questions?
I have just a couple of questions. Under the, in the police department, the, under the pole camera paid for, from confiscated asset fund. Is there enough money in the confiscated asset fund to pay for pole cameras?
Oh, yes, ma'am, there is.
And apparently, we had already agreed to fund a full-time position for the logistics technician. Did, did you not have someone like that?
So, the, the, we had a part-time. We assess our need as one full-time, one part-time. That's what we asked for our last year's budget. Full-time was funded with no part-time. After negotiation with city manager, we moved with two part-time. Still know that our future need is, our current need is one full-time, one part-time. So currently, we have two part-time.
So, if a full-time job proves that you have one to meet, one to spread?
We want to listen to the full-time and the remaining as part-time.
But they didn't feel like they needed that, and so how are we doing?
You know, basically, based on the schedules with the part-time people, the administration feels that a full-time position in council group should be enacted first. So then you have a full-time employee there all time handling particular rates. And if that is not sufficient due to growth or whatever particular reasons is, then come back and take a look at a, a part-time position. Rather than having two part-time positions and then coming back and sending to fund a full-time position. One of which may shift over, you know, may not, and then you would have wanted to have. But I think it's more important that we go to one full-time position first, and then we will come back and discuss.
Is that workable for your department?
We'll disagree or disagree. With two part-times, we have a five-day week covered, because of the way we did their schedules. But, you know, we, we submitted, and we, we got what we got, and we'll make it work.
Well, sometimes I think it's important for those of us who are not policemen and don't understand their needs and the reasons that you ask for pay sometimes, to have that explained. You know, what, why that's not good enough, or it just helps us to know that the budget is, is fair in any of all the departments. We have leads to right here, and we want to get equity.
Yes, ma'am, I'm happy to explain any of that. The logistics are the lifeblood organization, because they support all the equipment that all the rest of the department uses. And that's everything from vehicles on down to something really small, like a Wi-Fi hotspot goes into it, and everything in between. And it's literally thousands of items. And there's some technical knowledge and some hands-on knowledge required. And so, you know, but a few years ago, we didn't have any by that position, and we got a part-time. Now we've got two part-time, we'll make the progress.
So the fact that you're covered for five days, and that neither of them are full-time, is that the reason you're not covering for seven days? Or is it a seven-day position that you would envision?
Five days is probably adequate, you know, as the same schedule that the vehicle maintenance shop works on. And we do have spares for things that go down in the middle of the night or the weekend or the holiday, and we plan for that. So, I guess in a, in our new world, I have seven-day week, or which I think five is probably adequate.
In the fire department? Quint apparatus is code for a truck with a ladder, one of that. And, but it also has five other essential pieces of equipment that are required for firefighting. My understanding was that if you made dock this truck, it would go to fire station two, is that correct? Because of the distance that it takes, or the length of time that it takes for what you have now to get to East Perry.
That is correct, yes, ma'am. It would, it would be for station two. Or basically, what we would probably do is take the older ladder truck and put it at station two and move the newer one to, to station one. But the idea is to have two ladder trucks, because of the new constructions taking place in that East Perry area. All the new apartments and the current apartments and the house and lake apartments as well. But, you know, we've got several buildings out there that are three stories, or, or three stories. And we just feel like it's time for a second ladder truck. And the quint is, is code for ladder truck, yes.
So the quint that you had, a fire truck that's at, um, station two now, is that just a basic fire truck?
It is, it is a pumper, yes, ma'am. It's a pumper truck.
But it's a multi-story building, they're in trouble.
Yes. For, yes, ma'am, for rescue, they would be in trouble.
And how much would they cost?
Well, the joke is always a million.
Yeah.
We met with a, a vendor last week, and, and he informed us the price now for a ladder truck is around one point eight million dollars. So they're, they're going up all the time.
The longer we wait, the more it costs, though.
That, that's true.
Okay. I'm going to do a call on that one. The forcible entry problem. Now that I understand exactly what that is, I would imagine there are very many times to arrive at a fire where somebody opens the front door and breaks it. So this, this type of training equipment would enable your firefighters to learn how to open any type of locked door.
That's correct. Any type of locked door, whether it be a steel door in a concrete frame, or a wood door in a wood frame, no matter the type of door that it is. It, it would be a training prop for us to know how to open those, or force them in an efficient manner.
And what do they cost?
About twelve thousand dollars.
I would hope we might have reconsidered that, that part of their request, because that would be a year-round way to train every firefighter to open any kind of door that they encounter, and not have to figure it out once they got there.
That's, that's true.
From being our recommendation, we placed that on to a formal list when we give the tax digest and look at the funding that we made available to not only pick up that, or make some of the other stuff. And that's all we're looking at, is a number, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. Stands right now, anything else the council wants to add for police and fire, you can either wait to see how the digest is, or you will have to raise property taxes. Very simple.
Or adjust that.
Yes, ma'am. Or, yes, or, or adjust the budget, that's exactly right. But the only thing with that is, you will not necessarily be able to adjust or review the entire budget on where you're going to pull that money from. Because different departments have different funding sources and bases, have fees charges, that may be restricted funds, you know, whatever the case may be. So, for example, if you were going to add twelve thousand dollars for this piece apparatus, that goes on the fire protection fund. If you take a look at the budget, we're already estimating we're going to have to move probably at least two hundred eighty-six thousand dollars of general fund to support fire park, fire farm. And the reason we're doing that is, we are progressing to phase in the fees, so you don't get any big jumps or problems with all the individual households and businesses paying the fee. Any other addition you put into would have to either raise fees to pay for that, or you would have to increase supplement that has to come from general fund. If you're going to increase that supplement from the general fund, then you're going to have to raise taxes to pay for that supplement, because that's what pays for the supplement.
So we're proposing a list of things we want to take a second look at?
Yes, ma'am.
And I hope this will be on.
As, as, as the mayor has mentioned, that is a process we have done the numbers on. We go back and take a look and see what the actual digest figure is. And then council makes a determination if there's anything else they want to come back and fund. And based on that, will the police department and fire department benefit from that process?
We've been able to have control on the police department, again, very less. We put it in the budget here, we would have to say, let's wait and see what. We've been very, very fortunate with the digest that is increasingly increased that allows us to expand the services. So I think that's very responsible where we're looking at. So the funding will be a little bit, so, so, so.
The only other question that I have about, under leisure services. Because we're going into middle school, and I appreciate so much you're adding middle school age programs into the consideration. Because they're brand-new, and the community's not accustomed to them, I'm concerned about being fee-based. Especially considering the fact that something you might be looking at is lack of interest in an age group. And we, we can't judge that now. We can't judge a lack of interest, because we've never had anything for that age group. And I'm concerned that perhaps if we gave them a year of, of not being fee-based, so that we could make a judgment on, on the level of interest that's there. I think it's critical to have the late kids caught tied up with whatever Cephr is doing out there. Because it's so worthwhile and keeps them on that path instead of some other path. And I would hate to think that our fee program kept anyone from being able to participate. So I just, I just wanted to bring that out. That, that particular portion of his request, I would hope that maybe we can consider either a rate of reduced fee, or another fee for the first year to see how it goes. And it does make a difference for every other age group, and it does pay a bit, because we've never done it before, and it's quite a, well, maybe it was very mental even to, to see how it goes for them. But I just don't want there to be barriers for anybody to participate. The other thing that, I know that the leisure services department is interested in doing. I want to tell you this one thing, I really love about our leisure services department director, is that he is so much more interested in just their athletic skills. They're able to kick and throw, or that, or make a basket. He is totally committed to their whole being, and so many of his ideas can reflect that. He ran one by me, and I remember, and then we talked about it for a few minutes. And I said, well, my children did that when they were growing up. We called it tilting, where they learned proper manners, proper utensils to use. Whether they were eating with the queen, or eating with the mayor, or at a church function, or a school function. Perhaps they not had the opportunity to be schooled in some of those things, and, and I told them, I never even went to Queens, I'm sure my skills are low there. But there's so many of us that they helped with that. We'd like to even go for maybe some sponsorships. But I'd like for that not to be a fee-based program, because I don't know how many families would think, that were struggling with money, would think that paying for lessons on etiquette manners was the best use of their limited funds. So, Cephr, it might be that when the digest comes in and when money's available, we could have a plan in place, just going forward, we'd make requests about that. How's that sound, everyone?
I actually agree with Jordan about the middle school programming. Kids would, that would benefit from those programs, because a lot of those kids doing the summer, especially, are the ones that are walking the streets, they're mostly black street kids. And they need those programs. I think we would get more interest and get more kids in the building at this time if we take away the fee. And like she says, try for a while to see how it works. But I know those other kids that I see doing a lot of the things that, let's just say, they need that, those programs at the end, for middle school kids. And right now, I think it would be a hardship for any parent to have that addition to pay for, just because your child would like to be in a program. With gas going up, everything else going up, I understand why the league might not feel like we need to implement those programs at this time without a fee. But I think for the community, it would be most beneficial if we could find some money to let these programs come in, and get, get a chance to, to build up, and possibly turn it into a fee-based program later.
Any other questions?
I don't know what the charges would come to, if they were not. So I think the program structure would be, of course, break-even, break-even analysis. So if we brought someone in, used, I guess, that, the normal diet of that kid, we would just pass that cost along to participants. And that could be similar to what we did where robotics class, making the class was about twenty-six hundred dollars for robotics, sure. So we had to divide it among participants, which came up to eighty-five, ninety-five dollars per class. So I think to speak to what Ms. Bynum, Ms. Peterson is saying, if it's something enriching, like etiquette and conflict resolution, or, or something of that nature, to get somebody skilled in that field to teach, and then pass the cost along, would be a hurdle, in my opinion. Because I can't see any parents paying four-eighty classes, and, and I could be wrong in thinking that way, but I know it's something that, in the long run, affects the community. That's, that's my professional view.
I understand your question now, but for the middle school students, what sports programs? We talked about that initially, like, if they didn't make a school team, you know, there was nothing for them. So what would be an area of sports we think to offer middle school?
So with the sports, so my proposal was to extend the ages to, at least the age of fourteen. Of course, there will be a fee for participating, because there will be referees in jerseys and operational cops that are associated with those sports. But in the summertime, that would be the time that we offer our summer basketball league, or summer soccer league, to keep them engaged during these periods where they're not at school. So that would be the time period where we try to reduce the cost or eliminate the cost.
I think what we were talking about initially was maybe eliminating the fee for the most beautiful middle school sports, because we had never offered them anything before. And, you know, others could just see that, hey, this is just an experiment, see what the level of interest is. And, so not just for etiquette or robotics or other enricher things, but on actual sports, or specific activities, if they don't have anything.
Let me just ask, because how, how would you explain to everybody who pays a fee up until that point? That their families are paying their fees, I mean, so every, every, smart league we got pays fees, but all of a sudden, we got one group of people that we don't charge fees. I, I just have a hard time understanding how we're going to justify that, because if I'm the other, if I'm the other side, I'm like, I want that fee. So why can't you give the program free to this person, and you can't give it free to that person?
Right. So, that's why in the summer, the summer months, would be the focus for those reduced fees or free programs. I do think it would be hard to justify a fourteen-year-old, obviously, that they have to pay a fee. That would be a part of conflict with our citizens or other gangs. So I do, I guess, to, to make it fair, I think the most important times are when there's no school, during the summer months, that would be a focal point.
Okay, I'd say you, that, I think we got to consider that we are not budgeting for such time as this to carry it out. Then you're going to back, back up, if you're not there, you're not budgeting. Well, if you're working, take that. What we're going to do with the taxpayer, money got to come from somewhere, you know what I mean? If we increase my taxes one percent, two percent, or whatever, we're going to do something to try to help our children. And we all, you think that, you know, I know we're talking about the deal, or not, but I think that's a position that we got to be in, to make sure that we manage our government like we're supposed to. And anytime that we don't, you're paying us free, I think the money has to come from somewhere, but we had not budgeted, or you had not set down a budget, just like you just said, for the summertime. You know, we've got kids who, not to reach to the point that, got a camp, I was watching the news this week, and they were saying about the camp, it's going to jump up from two hundred to four hundred. You know what I mean? That's how fast it's going to jump up, and so people who are taking their kids to camp have a double price, you know what I mean? I'd say, because of inflation, and this is a thing that we have to consider, as we do things, we've got to consider certain things, this, you know what I mean? And the thing is that we want to be able to govern, either encourage or motivate, just like you said with the Ed Part, that's a good thing, with the children, I mean, train them, teach them. And we got something going on to keep them off the street, but we all, at the end, we're going to back, back up to, to our citizens. And, you know, they're going to raise sand, they're going, oh, you put on my taxes, what the fuck? You all just want to tax us to death, you tax this, you tax that. But that's something that we're going to have to be open, as we do plan it, and we do go forth, we got to make sure. And I think when we have a meeting, I think, I'll go back and look at Gilmore, and I'll, there's staff, and he said, we can read the next day to me, things that ain't considered. So our city does not, that's what great is.
Okay, well, I must say, that's a good part of, a part of the conversation. I was talking about free sports for, for middle-aged kids, I was talking about the class. Because I think if one person pays for, for those, for sports, every child should pay for sports, or we should help provide scholarships and something for them. So I was talking about the classes, I was not talking about sports. I just want to be clear on that. And I'm interested in them getting those classes, if at all possible, for, at this time, but not sports.
If, if I may, if the council's interested in pursuing this, and I think it ought to follow the same policy that we use with the sports, going back on Ms. Bynum's racist point. We have a program, going back on the youth subsidies there, that if you fall within problems about income, or whatever the case may be, or number of participants, then your fee is reduced. Historically, this council has always said that every program has to have some type of fee. They remember that, going back to council member Global, because he felt that's the only way you're going to get serious participation coming into these programs. But when you go back and take a look and consider, I'm not sure if that's going to be the same case here, but our other programs have at least fifty percent of people from outside the city coming in to participate in these programs. And so therefore, you know, if you want to, you know, proceed with it, then I think you should follow the same guidelines, like you do with the sports, by allowing for the scholarship deal. But those who are in a position to pay, that they have to pay. Because I totally agree with the mayor, because I've already been in some previous hearings with parents who are concerned about the sports fees, and what they have to pay, and all that type of stuff. And once that word gets out that you're providing programs at no cost to a group, regardless of their income, regardless of where they're residing, at least as far as I know, unless you're going to restrict this program only to city and peri children. That is going to kick up that deal, while people expecting to get the same type of break or reward, or, or free for all the other type of programs. And that can wind up being a considerable cost to that.
Mr. Gilmore, we do not offer subsidies to people who are not resident of the city.
No, we do not.
They've got to be paying taxes to qualify, to put the subsidy.
You have to be a resident. You have to be a resident, yes.
Other question, Tom.
If I, if I may.
Yes.
Uh, I just wanna, I guess, clarify, uh, what our question, uh, specifically meant. Uh, we, we asked to move the ten thousand, roughly ten thousand dollars that we used to pay our current summer camp, or our previous summer camp counselors to use it to pay instructors as we saw fit in, in sense of etiquette class and robotics and those type of programs. And those programs will go to target middle school, high schoolers because we, we, we all see that there, that there's limited activities for them during the summertime. Now, I do feel that there should be some form of fee. I, I agree totally, wholeheartedly, to give more buy-in from people who show up on time. I do think there should be some form of fee. Uh, but I, I just wanted to clarify. I didn't wanna just give away free everything. You know, just a free summer program deal where they come in day-to-day with no cost. You know, like a robotics class we charged for, uh, there was a nominal fee. Uh, it was, uh, like I, like I mentioned before, twenty-six hundred dollars for the class. We felt that we needed to set, uh, break, analysis, break-even structure. Now, there's some classes that I feel that would help, you know, like I said, enriching this certain demographic. I do feel that we should be able to, well, without a budget at all, I, I can't even secure, uh, an instructor and make money back. So if I have nothing in that cost center for instructors, I can't even pursue etiquette class and charge on the back end, from my understanding.
I don't, I don't believe anybody that's any problem with a break-even type program. An instructor costs three thousand dollars and you charge three thousand dollars. I think that's within your suspension of this kind of security.
Yes, that's absolutely correct.
My understanding that you have, we perfectly know that. And if you wanted to make it a break-even program and an instructor three thousand dollars, then you spread that deal, that number of people, we got a hundred people, you know, against twenty, thirty of us. So I, my understanding of the programs we would offer is that you, you have the discretion to make that decision any time you're so choose.
So you're asking to move the ten thousand dollars that we don't use for the summer camp?
Yes, yes.
To use, uh, for paying for instructors?
For, for additional program. Yes, ma'am. So, yes, ma'am.
Sure. And what happened for the summer camp?
So summer camp, uh, because we are, aren't, I guess officially out of fended, we're in a small space, uh, and if one kid pops positive with COVID, that entire camp would have to be canceled. Cause you're in contact with the same COVID protocol. So because we use, uh, our multipurpose room as the meeting space where bulk of the programming takes place, we thought it would be a disservice to cancel a summer program in the middle of camp and have to send everyone home. So we thought it, and then, uh, on top of that, we've noticed, we've noticed that, uh, middle schoolers and high schoolers are underserved, in my opinion. Uh, because, uh, you have other camps in the area, but middle schoolers and high schoolers are left to, uh, play sports or get involved in other things. So that, that was the reasoning behind the decision to cancel our summer camp.
Did you not charge the fee for summer camp?
We did, yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, that's the same thing. When you charge the summer camp, it's not as good as a break-even program. So I'm not sure where, you know, where the conversation is going here with you. In fact, we need to cover the cost of summer camp. Mr. Gilmore, can you answer?
That's absolutely correct. And remember, I mentioned that to you when we were going through the recap. The money from summer camp was, came from the, the expenditure level came from the fees that were charged for them. If you're not running the camp, then you're not charging the fee. So therefore, you don't have that ten thousand dollars. So if you're gonna use that ten thousand dollars, then you're gonna have to get that ten thousand dollars from the general.
Or from fees that you charge for the program?
Or, or at least a portion of it. You know, if you, if you go back and use that, the, you know, structure we have in place for the subsidies, you know, that, uh, whoever qualifies for the subsidy, they pay that minimum amount of the fee and then that difference is picked up by the city as part of the program subsidy. And I think that would be totally appropriate to continue on because it is exactly the same as what you do for your other youth programs. So you can't have anybody coming back. If you have people who don't live in the city coming in and they can't afford to pay, uh, I guess being the Cali city manager, then I guess they don't participate, you know, in the program unless you make some other type of change. But if you open it up and make any adjustments, you know, for example, on these middle school programs, uh, the, uh, program benefit, you know, have lower income and everything applies to all the participants, whether you live in the city or not. I can see where you could wind up potentially having some problems with that. But that could be your decision that you try for, you know, one year. You can also go no charge. Go for one year, you come on, council, collect all these subs, and that's what you want to do. But in my role as a manager, I think it's important to point out, like with all the departments, they all have excellent suggestions, they all have excellent fees. There's all kinds of stuff that you're really great to do. Every single one of them costs money. And we are coming up, once again, on reappraisal, you know, for the program. And I believe that there is going to be significant pressure for council to do something relative to adjusting the village rate this year. How much, I don't know. We'll have to see what comes back in. You also, which we're gonna get to a little later in the agenda, we are out for proposals for health insurance. I have no idea how expensive that's going to be, you know, when it comes in. I'd be willing to grant you, it's not gonna be cheaper than what we're paying right now. No matter what program, no matter what is, is chosen. So you're, you're going to be facing a number of, I think, very major issues coming up. And therefore, it may be advantageous to, to hold off on this. Or you may say you just wanna take it from fund balance or whichever kind of way that you want to go. I just think it's important to advise you all that there are financial impacts on every one of these decisions.
I think I echo what the mayor said. Now, I'm not sure where this question is going either. I thought you had no concerns about there being a fee. That was my understanding from my conversation, which is why I brought that up.
Yeah, I guess it might be me explaining it. It's kinda crazy. But, uh, so for certain programs, I understand that there needs to be a fee. But I do, I would, the, the, the meaning for this request is to have the option to make certain classes free. And, and those classes that would be, uh, enriching and that we, that we feel are important to the community, like, uh, etiquette class or, or something of that nature, that we could have those classes forfeit. Now, uh, participating in sports and in certain programming, I understand that there should be some form of fee to, to make up for the operations. But if my cost is zeroed out, I have to, I have no funds to, to, to even initiate the program or even, uh, request a etiquette instructor and that, that sort of deal. So that, that's, I guess, if I'm making sense, I, I confused myself at this point.
I think we'll, you know, we need to sit down and, and talk through this because anytime we start offering free programs, I'm not sure who's gonna have the discretion to say, well, that program is free. Because that's what I think that should be offered free. I don't know how we get there. If, and maybe it's, uh, maybe it's a sponsorship that the programs are born, we may be able to find the right sponsor that would like to, to contribute to governing or, or the cost of the instructor or something like that. So I think we need to, you know, look at that and explore our different options as it would evolve if that's a great opportunity to be honest.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore, you were giving us a recap.
I said.
I have a 4B to follow up on the council's twenty-twenty-third meeting. Before they move into the proposed park for Lake Forest suburb.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor and council, in your board pack is a memo from me. However, that does need to be adjusted. I have provided, and I apologize for the super poor quality, but each of you have a handout with a circle on it. Uh, based on information provided from Mr. Wood, uh, there is a lot right at the intersection of Doug Canal and Wild Zellia Drive. Does everybody see what I'm talking about on your map there with the circle? That piece of property is owned by the homeowners association and that could be used as a park. It would be, the cost estimated on that park would be approximately, uh, fifty-two thousand dollars to put in a series of equipment. It may be a little less than that if we wanted to keep the trees that are on that site. We have to kinda work around that. But my recommendation would be, at least initially, if council approves to, or concurs, excuse me, in this meeting, is to get with the homeowners association and see if they are interested in donating that property to the city. If the homeowners association is not interested in donating, then I would not recommend that we proceed because we can't spend building funds on private property. If they are interested in donating, then we will proceed with the planning of that and get back and we'll let you know.
Councilor.
The funding for that would come from Slosse eighteen.
And funding from your board of board?
Yes.
I have a 4B two, there's a proposed sidewalk at Wooden Eagle.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, also in your board pack is a memo from me following up on discussion for sidewalk over Wooden Eagle. Uh, if you also have, this one's a little better, but not very high-tech. I've been that handed out. Uh, based on some discussion and review, would recommend that the original proposed sidewalk, which would go along Boulder Creek and then onto Wooden Eagle Trail, connecting Langston Road up to the newer development Wooden Eagle, where they already have sidewalks, that's on your first plan. I've also given you a handout which recommends we also make the connection, which is the other portion of Wooden Eagle Trail that will connect from the park going over to Lake Joy Road. On Lake Joy Road, there's already a sidewalk on that side which can take you north and south for a considerable difference. If you go north on it, you take the sidewalk all the way up to Ninety-Six and possibly further. Uh, if you go south on that, it'll take you to Langston Road already. And once the Cali's work is done on that lower portion, it'll, sidewalk will be there to take you right into town. Uh, the estimated cost on that is approximately, for the two sidewalks, is approximately a hundred fifty, a hundred sixty thousand. That also would come from Slosse if you concur with us to proceed.
Councilor. Mr. Gilmore, we have time to, roughly on this, after agreeing to proceed.
If you agree to proceed, then we would hire an engineering firm to design all that type of stuff. Uh, and then we will, not necessarily that we won't proceed, but we make sure each of the affected property owners are advised. Uh, my sense is there could be some kickback from some of the property owners about what they would, it's still in our right, but, but what they would lose, uh, what they think as far as their front yard. But, but I don't know.
And I think that looking at some of them, it would be, uh, substantial. And the only way to get there is through engineering, I'm determined, where we have, by the way, and have a machine with that.
I.
So would we bring the engineering back to the, to the council and say, this is the act of engineering, here's the act of, uh, of, of.
Once we act that, we need to contact all others.
Then you gotta have all that.
Thank you.
4B three is proposed, put the cost of the park at Stun Gate three. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, in your packet is a memo from me. This is not changed from what I originally sent to you. The estimated cost of playground equipment at that location is seventy-three thousand nine hundred. We already own that property. Uh, you can see an outline on what's being proposed with the location there, which is one of our standard, standard layout that we do for parks. And if council agrees, we recommend you concur with us to proceed on this project.
So where will the funding come from for the project?
This comes from Slosse eighteen, for structure.
Councilor, a question about, just on David Park. Are you gonna, please, call, just, just, this, this would have to, now, plus, you know, Mr. Gilmore, so, can you answer?
No, if you concur, we'll proceed with it, in the final design, everything. Now, we'll be coming back to you if you afford the bid, you'll be the equipment in that instance.
All right. I have a 4C is the office of the city manager, I guess the city manager. Uh, 4C wanted to propose making of various city facilities.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, in your board pack is a recommendation from the administration about naming some of the city facilities. First one is wastewater treatment plant facility. We are recommending to name that the East Area Wastewater Treatment Facility. Fantastic originality on that, I thought would have its regular policy. Second one, going back on Wooden Eagle subdivision, uh, historically, they have just been referred to as Park One and Park Two. So we are recommending that the first one, which is at the location of Wooden Eagle Trail and Boulder Creek Road, be named Wooden Eagle Park, since that's named a subdivision. And the second, which is located at the intersection of Amber Street and Loa, Loa Trail, would be named Amber's Park. Uh, the other item we're recommending to make an adjustment on is the Old County Courthouse, and if you should go back and designate that as City Hall. Uh, and also we're recommending to change the mailing address on that to eight hundred Carroll Street because that's actually the front door of that building. Current addresses, we're, they're coming in on the back off Main Street. We have a loading dock and that kind of stuff. So I think that would be a better way to go. And since we be calling that building the City Hall, we recommend to rename the current City Hall the Administration Building, or Administrative Building. The reason, the reason we're making these recommendations is, you remember, we're getting ready to start construction of the new City Hall and that will move fairly quickly. So we'd like to have this stuff all ready to send.
All right, so come on.
Is the police department not going into the old city hall?
I'm sorry?
The police department, are they, I thought they're going into the old city hall.
The police department will go into the old city hall with a number of the tenants currently in the city hall. For example, the city manager's office moves into the new administrative building located over on, uh, number three and Red.
Another question. Are you in the current of the new hall, or is it being named?
I just have one question, maybe I could use on it. The current City Hall, as it is now, is gonna be named Administrative Building. What then would be second Administrative Building down on the railroad tracks to be called?
We probably, we probably switch names again. We prob, we probably switch names again.
They can change names to make it easier.
Okay. Yeah, the, the, the current City Hall would not be named Administrative Building, once the arrangements and everything are done. That would shift over to whatever be appropriate, the council felt, for the police operations, because that's all that would be in that building.
You know, it's just the oldest, like, cuz you didn't see the name on any of those buildings. Not his name, it's just a street name, white ones.
It's been over a year, don't let it go. Some things I never forgot.
Carol's at home, baby.
So, council, I assume that you are ready for us to move forward?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, please.
Alright, this will be coming to you tomorrow as a resolution, because that's what's required for making of this.
I have 4C-2, the sculpting permits, funding, and updates, Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, in your packet, talking about health insurance, is a breakout currently on what we have based on the coverage that is offered. As you can see, for the basic coverage for employee only, we do not charge anything. It's free to the employee, if the, uh, the city pays a thousand dollars per month for that. Uh, for the basic coverage for family, is two hundred twelve dollars, uh, of which the city pays two thousand two hundred per month. And then, that's a total of twenty-four hundred and twelve dollars per month. If you take the buy-up plan, and the employee per month pays one eighty-one, and the city pays a thousand, you can see it, others than the families, four seventy-nine, uh, twenty-two hundred, for a total of twenty-six seventy-nine. Uh, any health insurance cost above, what we originally have budgeted is paid for by the city. We cannot go back and make adjustments relative to the employees. So, to give you an idea, the last month, we have had to move three hundred forty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars into the health insurance program to cover the costs. Attached to that is a listing of claims, because that's where the cost point of going up compared to what we originally budgeted. So you can take a look at that with that information through April. But like I said, five, three hundred forty-nine thousand has been moved in May to cover health insurance costs. To give you an idea of the participation that we have, uh, we don't require employees to participate in our health insurance program. So for the employees at the base, uh, we have twenty-five, which is forty-two percent of our employees. The buy-up, we have thirty-five, which is fifty-eight percent. We have a total of employees, eligible employees who would like not to be covered at fifty-two. On the family side, for the basic, eight families for fourteen percent, and forty-nine percent of the families for eighty-six percent. Want to provide this information to you in case you get some type of questions, or importantly, we have this information, and you'd be satisfied based on when we will be coming back, based on what results of the health insurance proposals are.
Questions, council?
Yeah, one question, I think that their contribution hasn't changed for six years, but are there sometimes changes in the policies? So that sometimes their deductibles end up being higher than they might have been?
No, the only, the only difference between the base and the buy-up is how much you have to pay initially going to see the doctor, for example. If you're in the basic, you get the break about not paying, if you're an employee only, nothing, each month, okay? If you have to go to the doctor as the employee, then you have to pay a hundred percent of whatever the costs are until you totally get to the deduct, the deductible amount. If you go in with the buy-up plan, you have to contribute each month. Trade-off on that is, for example, you go to a doctor's office, and you just pay like the first fifty dollars, and then the rest is covered by the plan. And of course, it depends on what type of coverage, which doctor you go to, but the overall coverage and plan is exactly the same for, uh, basic plan and then the buy-up.
Other question? Thank you for making your question, Mr. Gilmore. Next item is 4C-3, and this is to consider establishing a legacy fund for Evergreen Cemetery. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, proposal has been, been, or concept has been presented to the city, uh, that we may wanna consider establishing a legacy fund for Evergreen Cemetery. Uh, generally, the outline on that, did talk about an attachment, but we get the fully attachment up, because that was provided. Uh, but the general concept would be that you all, as council, authorize a legacy fund. It would, the revenues with it would strictly come from donations, contributions, whatever the case may be, uh, for activity or improvements out at Evergreen Cemetery. You would have a committee, of whatever members you would think would be appropriate, to, uh, review, you know, request and everything. There'd be certain restrictions relative to how much of the income of the legacy fund could be used in any particular year. So in other words, the legacy fund will continue to build up, you know, so we still have contributions. Uh, this would not replace what the city does for the basic maintenance, but it would provide an option for groups, people, whatever, that are interested in doing some other type of improvements at the cemetery. You know, for example, fixing up some of the cemetery plots where there are little family members, you know, around, uh, making some other type of improvements, for example, another gazebo, you know, something, something like that, out of the cemetery. We're recommending to start initially with Evergreen, uh, because of the long history with it. We think there might be more interest just because of, uh, its history and length of time. Uh, if you all approve this, and it appears to be successful, we can certainly consider that for Woodland Cemetery as well.
Who would appoint the, uh, committee members, how, how that could be formed?
You would, you as a council.
There would be no difference in the other committee that we have, that serves the pleasure of council, and we would oversee that. And it's really, it's somewhat of a perpetual care fund. We don't have a perpetual here or there, and, uh, and so, we're looking at, as families age out, we have that situation today, where there's, there are no heirs, or heirs have interest in that, but those still need to be cared for. So, I think this will be, uh, and I would think that, you know, if, if you think of improvements and all of it, need to be made down there, or recommended, we'd make that, that, to the council. I mean, we're not, not turning over, as I understand, we're not turning over the cemetery to open it.
That's correct. City would still be the honor, state, city would still approve any of the improvements being made, uh, but it provides another avenue of some additional level.
And this would all be out there, and we'd have, this council would approve it, and, 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 this would be, would have to develop that. So we do have a model that's being used by a couple of people, looks to be very, very good, but like, we say that it has proprietary information. So, we're not, we're not going to share that. We'll, we'll get, uh, documents together if you guys are able to, that, and, and second, we need to, to, and, and. We'll, we'll work forward, toward giving you a, uh, makes me type it out in the chat. I have a thought, I'm trying to, right, just finding breaks.
Well, we're only a few days away from the Juneteenth celebration that we've held at Wood Park, so I just need to remind you guys, I look forward to that. We're gonna have an important, and I go to the park on the eighteenth, on twelve, at East Town and in Torrey.
We're delighted to have you back. Glad to see you, you know, having been thinking more, so, you can, you can be better about, like, you know, everything. You made it through surgery, you built records, you made some, thank you, for, for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. As I trust you all aware, Chief Lynn has turned in his retirement notice to us, uh, for him to move on to another aspect in his career, that, that we're very fortunate to have had. What we've had in here, I think will be very good in his new position. Uh, however, uh, we would like to have council start thinking about the process to use for replacing the chief. This is a department head-level position, and so therefore, it is appointed by council. Uh, council has been involved with the interview process, final candidates, uh, and we would, uh, like you to be thinking, uh, along those lines, we'll be back, be back with you, there's not an immediate need for it, we do wanna get going relative to that. Uh, in general terms, I think the process we have used previously, where the mayor appoints personnel committee, take a look at that, review all the applications, go through the, come back, get back, okay, I think, if the best way, like, to power the council field, would be fine. Second aspect relative to that is, we would like you to be thinking about, uh, if there is a need for interim chief. And if there is an interim chief, you know, are there any particular preferences or suggestions for whatever relative to that? We'll contact Chief Lynn, you know, to provide to you what recommendations he may have, uh, relative to it. But I think it's important for you all to be thinking about who you would be comfortable with this as well. Do you wanna point out for our usual process, is that whoever would be selected as the interim chief would not be prohibited from applying for the chief's position. So some entities do have that restriction, but we do not. Uh, as far as administration is concerned, I think it would be a good idea that we have an interim chief, as we've done in the past. And I think that it, uh, it works well.
Questions, council, about the process? I think it's worked well for us in the past, we'll, we'll, think about it, we don't want the answer tonight. Uh, we need to think about how the process is going to work, and really evolve, and, and, again, this entire council will lead the interview team, that interviews, which people who make the initial cuts come in, interim, so, so, they will make a decision, right, on that position. Alright, I'm sure you're prepared. Anything else? Anything else, Mr. Gilmore?
I did.
Mr. Spence?
No, sir. I have a simple, sort of, complicated, I, uh, just, can you, can you, uh?
Yes, sir, I just would like to remind the law to, to update, uh, members of the industrial building.
Alright, I'm not here.
Said to remind the law to update the members of the industrial building.
Would you put that on, what agenda would you give to the, uh, morning, is that correct?
Not tomorrow, but the next week. Okay, for sure, your first meeting tomorrow?
Chairman Stoddaker is, uh, that, is not, so, the mayor is, you know.
Yes, but Chairman Stoddaker, his position is on the development, yes, not just that person.
Right. So, what do you make that, to, thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Worthing?
Nothing to add, sir.
Mr. Wood?
Nothing to say.
Chief?
Uh, yes, sir, uh, one thing, uh, Mayor and council. We've been dealing with, uh, drive, bike ride across Georgia most of the day. They started coming in, uh, ten-thirty or so this morning, they've been coming in all day, I think they're all here now. Um, downtown footprint is, is shut down, and got a fairly good crowd down there right now, so about ten minutes ago. And I think there's a band playing at seven thirty tonight. I don't know how many, it's thirteen-hundred registered drivers, and then there are a few hundreds of floor staff who are actually going out. Coming to downtown area, but apparently a number of them have already. And, uh, we'll, you know, put them to bed tonight, and we'll get them out of town tomorrow, and they'll move on to their next location.
Sir, you may, just wait a minute. Chief?
Nothing further, thank you.
Mr. Swan?
No, I said it, no, thanks.
Ms. Gibson?
This morning, at seven thirty-ten?
Ms. Garrett? Ms. Clark?
Yes, sir.
Is that it, is that it? Have our meeting tomorrow evening, the council meeting starts at five o'clock, and our regular council meeting will begin at six o'clock. Is there anything to come before us, is anything for the insurance?